With the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission's agenda for an item not listed. Have any? Means we have none. I'm move on to number four. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
I have a motion in second. All those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda items. We have approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
The motion is second. Any additions or corrections?
No.
Mr. Chair.
Your question?
I just have a comment to make. There's a blanket travel request in there for anybody that'll be going to peer in the way of commissioners or department heads to testify in front of the legislature this year. And I just would like everybody to be reminded that they need to let Stacy know if they're going so the commission knows who we've got out in peer testifying on what bill. It'd be nice, even though we've got the travel voucher approved, we just need to know who's going. Thank you.
Get that? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to routine of business, approval of the claims. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
A motion in second. Additions or corrections? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Borzma.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. Community health, would you like to start?
Morning.
Morning.
Summary wise, as far as the part of our, we'll continue to do phone services for our clients. We still continue to do immunizations in the office. Some of our educational things or items that might be picked up by clientele, we do more of a curbside, just so we're following the COVID requirements or the COVID guidelines. Things that are coming up for us are going to be, date to be determined. The Brookings County Pod will go into effect at some point. At this point, they're just planning stages. We don't really know any other details at this time as far as dates or timeframe for that. We're continuing to do school services based off of the guidance we've been giving for school delivery. So we're working with schools to kind of finish up some things via Zoom, potentially some things via in-person as well. That's about it. Any questions about the summary or the stats?
Questions?
I just, I'm curious, what kind of contacts, if any, your offices getting from the public as relates to COVID?
We are getting some calls like a lot of other offices are getting and just because people probably look up, you know, South Dakota Department of Health for our area and they get our phone number. Typically, it's asking, you know, what, what group am I in? When am I going to get a vaccine, that sort of thing? All of those, we are referring to the 211 resource. That's the guidance that we've been given. And from there, the 211, you know, that's 24 hours a day for Brookings, for our area. So then if they cannot answer their question, typically they're referring them to the COVID number.
Thank you.
Is what we're hearing. Yep.
Any other? Thank you.
Thank you.
Go next.
Just real quickly, with the nice weather here, the bridge is coming along nice north Bruce. Got the complete removal of the bridge done and they're pounding pile on the north end and then on getting the sheet pile set for the cofferdam on the first bend. So things are moving along nice with the nice weather. Other than that, there's been moving a little snow.
Any questions? Thank you. Lori?
Good morning. Um, let's see, last Friday, mobile home distress warrants went over to the sheriff's office for collection. So probably in May, June, you'll be seeing those that weren't uncollectible. I'll be presenting those to you. Tax notices, of course, went out. I'm sure you all got yours and were really thrilled. And then the one thing that our office is doing, we're tweaking the claims process just a little bit to catch, like today, we had the one claim that we caught that was going to be paid twice. So we're just putting in another layer of checking so that that doesn't happen in the future. We're going to ask department heads to be more specific in their description on their claim so that it's easier for you guys to see what they're, they're paying. One other thing, the Boys and Girls Club detention grant or award that the county is kind of being the middleman on. I did a Zoom meeting this last week with the state and the Boys and Girls Club and the county is going to kind of step back a little bit and let them communicate directly instead of giving me the bills. I give them the bills. I get paid. I pay them. So we're going to step back a little bit, but I will still get copies of everything. And I'm going to start presenting that to you guys when I get those so that you can see what's being paid, that kind of thing for future use when that grant expires. Other than that, they came in yesterday and took the tops off of the counter. So construction has officially started.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thanks.
Bob?
Good morning. First thing, they, they started the COVID-19 shots for people 80 years and older. I came in yesterday a little bit. We had some email traffic on that. The Brookings Health System is updating their, their website as we speak and should be active here pretty soon on for how people can sign up for that. Right now, it looks like the clinics are contacting people, but you're only going to be contacted when it's your time to sign up for the shot. I believe Sanford and maybe a Vera both already sent out pre-messengers saying, you're in our health system. When it's, when it's, when we got the vaccine, we'll contact you again for you to sign up for an appointment. So, and, and I just got an email. The hospital is in coordination with 211, update 211 on Brookings County specific information. So if someone from the county calls and asking for COVID-19 information, they get the latest information. And the reason the hospital is so involved is they're the ones that receive all vaccines for Brookings County. The, if, if you get the shot from a Vera and if you get the shot from Sanford, the vaccine is basically issued out of the hospital to those clinics to assist them. And both clinics are assisting Brookings Health in doing it. Also, just so the county commission knows, the Veterans Administration Hospital in Sioux Falls is also administering COVID-19 shots. Our DAV van carried down a 92-year-old veteran yesterday that had an appointment to get this COVID-19. So the VA is using the same process, except the VA is actually calling each individual, scheduling an appointment, and then as the veteran gets their shot, they get their next appointment for the follow-up shot, depending upon what vaccine. And I have no idea what vaccine the VA is giving. And other than that, we are meeting. What, the, the way the pods broken down, we actually got, got, we're three deep. We're set up for a pod team and then if that pod team fails, we got a second pod. So we're set up, we're stacked three high on our pod and we're, we'll, on Wednesday, we're going to start our initial meetings and talk to the individuals at the Swetel Center and starting the process. So when we do get the vaccine, and that's, that's why you don't see a pod in operation right now. We could operate it. We could activate the pod immediately, but without the vaccine, we'd just be standing around twiddling our thumbs. So the pre-planning is going on. The key players are discussing all, what's going to happen. And as soon as, soon as the vaccine is ramped up and, and we get enough doses to, to require the pod, and you might say, well, what is the magic number to require a pod? And that is when the, when the health system in Brookings County is overwhelmed and we got more vaccine and we got people to give the vaccine to, then they would activate the pod. The hospital administrator through the Department of Health, the, the way the county is involved is, of course, we run them, we run the County Emergency Operations Center. The pod will have its own separate emergency operations center. And then you got the County Emergency Operations Center. Well, in a situation like this, when we don't have a major disaster and our EOC is needed elsewhere, we'll put our assets towards the pod and work that away. But the pod's always been designed from ground level. This is in case we, we're in the middle of a major disaster, flooding, tornado, you name it, our emergency operations center would, could have the capability of operating separately from anything dealing with the pod. So, and we still got that capability, but we are not going to stand by and not assist the pod. While the pod is going on, we're going to put our assets towards it and go on. And, um, like I say, they, they just put out some new information today and as soon as the hospital releases it, apparently 211's got it. And, and once they release it, we're going to take it to like, the county is going to start being proactive and putting it on, getting some spots on the radio station and also the Town and Country Shopper. We're going to run some ads to be as proactive as we can. And you might say, well, are we talking days, weeks, months, years? You know, I'd have to recommend you call the 1-800 number from Department of Health and ask them because that's, that's, that's all we know at this time. We're, we're doing the best we can and people call me, that's what I do. I recommend they call 211 because they've got literally the latest information from the Department of Health and the latest information now from Brookings Health System, the hospital system in Brookings. So, next up is drainage. We had our ad hoc drainage meeting January 11th. We're actually due to send you a report on February 2nd. Our next drainage meeting is February 1st to, to discuss the final report. So I would like to request that we get it in case we need it, a one-month extension and push our ad hoc report due date to March, the first meeting in March versus the first meeting in February. And I, just, just, we are meeting February 1st and we may have the report done 100% and we'll present it to you if it is. But that February meeting may come out where we have to revise the report before it gets to your level is, is my, the reason for my request. We're not going to drag this on for years. You will have a report by the first meeting in March or, what's the commission's thought about that?
And I, I just want to say that I think we should be asking for two months because we didn't meet for a period of time because of COVID. And I, I think if we have, when we have our meeting on February 1st, we'll see the first draft. We may need to have a second meeting to, to work on that draft. I'm, I think Bob might be optimistic and I'm, I'm hoping he's right, but I think we should have a 60-day extension just so we don't have to come back and ask again.
Okay, I'll revise my request. The first meeting in April then, please.
And COVID is the reason for the delay.
I mean, is, is there projects though that you want to move forward with in this report or anything like that? Because by the time we get to April, we're going to start seeing a lot of movement in the water and drainage and all that kind of stuff and potential flooding or not flooding and stuff. So I just didn't know if, if there's projects that would be a recommendation out of this task force, you know, we would probably want to get started on that sooner than later in the spring, while the spring is going. But if it's more of an informational and there's nothing like that, that doesn't bother me, I guess.
The way I'm envisioning the report is going to be totally informational at the beginning and then we may end up fine tuning some stuff for specific projects. But as of, as of right now, and the draft is being formulated, we, we, all we, all we're going to have is some recommendations for the county. Nothing, nothing, not specific projects recommendation level.
Chairman, Bob, when you get down to the specific project level with recommendations, we're still talking engineering processes to go through those things. We're not going to be doing any projects this year. It would more than likely be next year or the year after before we've done engineering and, and financed and completed these projects. Is that an appropriate thought?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, I, I think it's key that it's in. So if there's any projects that the county commission wants me to add into the budget process, of course, that starts in June and that's where we, we, well, at, at the county, too many times, we want to put Band-Aids on, on projects. It's time we, we look at it and put it into the budget process. If we're going to do a long, long-term project, go ahead and do that. And, you know, my $1,600 a year drainage budget just don't, doesn't carry a lot when it comes to engineering reports and things like that. And I, and, and Avery, I've, I've never met budget on drainage, maybe once or twice, just because I, but.
I just, I just want to make sure that the public understands that this is a long-term solution. At this point in time, it's not going to be fixed this April, May or June, or probably next year either, probably a year or two. After that, by the time we, we budget and do engineering studies.
And, and of course, we'll discuss this in the actual final report, but we're, we're, we're trying to ensure anything that we recommend to the county commission is countywide, affects all county citizens and not one select group of county citizens. So.
Thank you.
It's going to take some time. And it looks like we got a, we got a emergency management drill going on here. I'm going to leave in just a few minutes, go downstairs and do some work on that. I'm going to be on the radio again talking emergency management. Other than that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, when we're done with him, I did have a couple of questions for Lori. I thought she was going to be back up, but I don't, now that I look at the agenda, I don't think she's coming back. And I'm wondering if, when we're done talking with Dustin, if, if you would give me an opportunity to back up for a minute. Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
Start off, since January 5th, archery range had 56 people through, gun range had 125. I just wanted to clarify, this attendance is for our public hours. So there's been more than these amount of people. I don't put the events and Jo-Ad and all that stuff in there. So these are just for our public hours. Starting as of January, we're pretty busy all the way until May in the gun range and the archery range. We have Jo-Ad, which they're up to 26 participants now. We're still doing a two-night shoot, Sunday, Monday. 4H Shooting Sports, they come in there at seven o'clock on Saturday morning and then they're also in there Sunday night. They're out before we open up to the public and then they have a little archery shoot on Tuesday evenings as well. Arrow Mates, they're every Monday night from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. When I started, we had five people involved with that. Now we're up to 11. Couple of the college kids now have come out and they're flying airplanes out there too. Every Tuesday night from 5:00 to 9:00 in our gun range, we have a Brookings Rifle and Pistol Club. They're doing precision shooting. Big Sioux Bowman have started up. They have 17 members. They're going to be in for 10 weeks, shooting every Wednesday night from 7:00 to 9:00. We had a private event in the classroom for two days. I'm trying to promote that little classroom and do more of that stuff in there. Brookings County Republicans, they were out this last Saturday. We booked them for 10 months for 2021. Started our Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Gun League last night. It went very well. I went down to the depot and we got some coupons. We handed them out when they left. Kind of something fun. And I'm going to get a plaque made from Brookings Engraving. So the winners are going to get their name put on the wall. Hopefully get a little bit competitive, something new. We had 25 people show up for that, hoping to grow that as well. On the 12th, I went and talked to the Optimist Club, kind of explained to them what we do out there. They're looking for volunteer opportunities. Maybe someday if we get an event out there, they can run the concession stand. We can work something out with them. We're continuing, continuing to clean up the software that we use out there. One of them is Zoho. We enter in all the memberships and the waivers into that so we can keep track of everybody. We started at 800, now we're down to 253. So out there right now, as of a week ago, we had 253 members. There's 142 archery range members and then there's 111 gun range members. Larry and I, on January 7th, we talked with Train, which later in the agenda, we can discuss that, on a service agreement and what we kind of expect out of them. Looking at hiring two more people by the end of the month, help with all 4H and all the events that we've had going on with cleaning up after and the snow removal and all that kind of stuff. Uh, I just kind of wanted to get the ball rolling here and your thoughts on possibly another full-time person? I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that, but I think last year, we still had $60,000 left in the budget. I know we got to figure out retirement and all that, but I didn't know if you guys had any input on possibly another full-time person. I don't know if it'll happen this year. My goal would be maybe in June or July, if you guys approve of that. I think we need somebody out there, but I just was curious on what you guys had to say about that.
Any comments? I guess his events increase in events? I mean, we're going to eventually need somebody, in my opinion. And what, what number, what number is that?
Yeah. And I, and I'm still keeping track of attendance, events that we're doing. I know we have to grow the facility and get more people in there using it to need another full-time person. But my thoughts were like an office, front desk person from nine to five, Monday through Friday, just to help out with that kind of thing.
I'm not sure what would, with the part-time staff, would you?
I, and that's another thing, I'd probably cut part-time staff. As of right now, I'm just doing rough numbers, keeping four part-timers for the nights, the weekends, kind of the changeover stuff we do for when we have to set stuff up in the archery range, the classroom, the cleaning, and then possibly hire maybe a maintenance person for the filters and snow removal and then cleaning a little bit regularly. I mean, right now, we're trying to keep up as much as we can with the part-time staff, but sometimes we do get busy to where we can't touch up the bathrooms and things like that.
Okay.
I just wanted to start talking about that now and see if there's a need for it, but.
Okay.
Could, could I say, like have Dustin sit down with Kristen and I and come up with where some of these positions might fall in the pay plan, for instance, and come up with kind of an estimate of cost on what that would look like for that budget if, if we're looking at, you know, I sit down with Dustin and figure out kind of what is, what he was, his, if he got everything he wanted and then kind of pare that down from there. And we could get some proposals and put some dollars and cents to it.
I think.
Go ahead.
That plus the kind of year-over-year performance of how the facility has been looking and usage data so that we can kind of see that growth and some of those numbers over time would be really helpful in order to make that decision. I'm open to the idea certainly, but want to see that in conjunction with the data that you've been collecting and the information on the financials for the facility.
Yeah, that's, that's what I've been, I'll be there a year in April and I'm keeping track of the attendance and when the building's open and if we need it. Right now, I mean, we're basically open from eight to nine every night and then Monday nights is 10, that's seven days a week. And I just want somebody there to promote the facility as well when I'm up on the roof checking, yeah, all that kind of stuff or touching up the bathrooms, just keeping the place clean. But yeah, I will keep track of all that stuff and get you guys the numbers.
And, and I just want to say that I have no problem with conversation and looking at costs and seeing if we get a recommendation from the facility board on that kind of thing. But in, in 2022, that's when I think we're going to have to take a look at what we're doing for janitorial maintenance. And if we're looking at something at BCOAC, that's going to have to tie in with what we're going to do with the jail when it's done and how many FTEs we're going to need for that type of work throughout our system. So that might be a more appropriate time to be making some of those kind of decisions.
I agree, yeah, because I want to look at that and then we could definitely loop that facility right in with the other facilities for as far as maintenance needs go. So that would be easy enough to do.
Because some of the maintenance that, I mean, Dust needs to figure that into the budget too, the savings that he's, meaning they're taking a lot, a lot of the maintenance issues out there that they're handling themselves instead of hiring, hiring people to do them too. So make sure you figure that in there too.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, would you like to come back up?
I'm really sorry. I thought you were coming back up again later in the agenda and, and I just want to say to the commission on page 117 on my iPad, we've got the fund balance report. So it's 117 of 189 and I had four questions about that report that I wanted to, to ask you about. First of all, that when we look at the 101 general fund. First of all, that when we look at the 101 general fund, we don't have a number for our unassigned fund balance. And I had a little explanation, and I think Stacy's going to say a few things about that, but I want to point out the four things I got questions about, and then I'm going to let you talk. I had a question about the non-spendable fund balance, the inventory for the highway department. And I'm not sure how our inventory number stays the same from last year when we did buy some big items. Doesn't that number adjust to reflect that we bought additional large equipment during the year? And then when you look at the 207 fund and the 226 fund, those funds should not be in the negative, I don't think. I think that number's, I think they're supposed to be positive. I looked back two years on how it was. I think those numbers get added together and not subtracted, but of course, I'm not the finance person. It just doesn't look to me like the report's right. And I just wanted to ask you, and I just tell everybody, I did send the, Loria and Stacy an email on that, so they knew that I'd be asking those questions. I just think there are some things in this part of our financial report that aren't correct that I wanted us to be sure that we'd made a record for the public that we've known on that. Go ahead, Stacy.
Right, and I think some of it's just a timing thing, because we really, truly haven't closed out 2020 yet because of just timing of things. We're still paying bills yet today for 2020. So, yeah, this, I think, kind of got done with kind of the numbers as they were at a given point, but we're not, we're not closed out yet. So we will, we will take a look and dig into this a little bit and present this again in February, when it's, when everything's closed down and we're ready for it. As far as the inventory goes, I know that's a, that's kind of a process that we go through at audit time. That's why it hasn't changed at this point. And I don't think that inventory is necessarily big equipment. I think it's, if I recall, it's kind of just other things on hand, but I'll have to kind of look at that, too. But I don't think, I think you're thinking fixed assets. We don't consider that's a fixed asset. Inventory is actually things that we use at the shop, you know, things like that.
Like culverts and tires, are they inventory?
That would be considered fixed assets. So it's kind of two different things. And I know as part of the audit process, we go through kind of a calculation on that, on that inventory, so I think it changes some then, if I can recall back to my days of doing that. But we can, we can look at that a little bit closer, too. So, yeah, we'll dig into it and report back on it.
So those were, those were my questions. Thank you.
Also, just before we go here, just the be-it noted items, too. We usually note those. As Lori had mentioned, there was a correction of the claims that we approved two weeks ago. We caught it before the checks were actually cut, but we wanted to make you aware of it, that there was one that had duplicated. So it did not go out twice, so we made that correction. And then just the other things as part of the finance officers' report, the auditors' account with the treasurer, payroll, and additive totals, a highway expenditures' report, and the register of deeds, statement of fees collected.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have.
We have that 9:00, but I don't, she's not here yet. The gal from Legislative Audit, I think, is going to come up, so, right? I did give you a copy of the engagement letter, but we can just keep going along. That's not, that's just something we can do when she gets here, so.
Mike, would you like?
Like, doing the shots also, and they do call veterans directly to set up the time for them to see them. The other thing I, the one thing I wanted to talk about, that's a little bit not necessarily in our office, but was the Housing Board. And thank you to Stacy and Michelle. The financial report is online now. Everyone can go on there and look at it and see. The audit was a good audit. It was accepted by the state, and they said it was, you know, I guess like unremarkable or something. There was no errors or any questions on that. One thing that one of you have asked for is kind of an update of what's going on, and I did email this to a couple of the Commissioners, but as of December 31st, there are 284 clients on housing. 296 were, pre-applications were completed, 172 of those were termed, and then 124 of those clients were briefed and given a second voucher for 93 that were added in in 2020. A lot of the ones, quite a few of the Section 8 individuals had passed away, and so that's the reason our numbers don't go, fluctuate as much. We bring people on and others pass away. Right now, there is a waiting list, meaning that the money has been all used for housing at this point, and so people will do have to wait now before they can get onto the housing. Without a waiting list, most time, it's 30 to 60 days, depending on how quickly the client is able to find an apartment, you know, get a landlord, and the vouchers are cut and stuck. Anyway, that was on the housing thing. Oh, and the last thing on the housing thing, before I forget, I have resigned from the Board. It was not my choice. After reviewing some of the statute, it was discovered that I couldn't be on it in the first place. So, anyway, I am off the Board now, and we currently have two openings on the Board. I have reached out to a couple of people that I thought would be very good for the Board. I've not gotten much response. I don't know if we've gotten any applications in.
We have not. We're going to start advertising for positions again. We've got several openings on our Boards that we'll be advertising for again.
Housing does have a meeting on Thursday here on that. Oh, one other thing I wanted to mention, and I put it on my notes, as far as the open meeting laws, those have been met. When we were meeting at the bank, the bank did post that on the door of the bank, and the minutes have been posted after each meeting at the Housing Office on their wall. I think the only time that we've probably had an issue is the first time we had it in this building, and I failed to post the minutes on there. What we have done now is it's going to be posted on the electronic sign, and anything else, thanks to, again, to Stacy and Michelle. We are, now have our own page on the county website, so. Anyone has any questions?
Are we still having a problem with vouchers leaving? Are we still having problems with vouchers leaving the county or the state or Section 8?
That will always be an issue because of the way the rules are written. Once you've gotten a Section 8 voucher, and you live, you live in that county for one year, at that point, you are allowed to port it out to anywhere that you choose. Now, the problem we run into, you know, here are rents for, and I can't remember the numbers off my, top of my head, but let's say it's $700 for a three-bedroom, okay? Well, when they port those to Sioux Falls, it's not really that much of a difference. And the housing agency that accepts it, they have to get them onto their program first, okay? So if there's an opening, they have to absorb those that were ported out. Now, the problem sometimes you run into is we had a couple that have moved to, like, Los Angeles and stuff, which is a much higher Section 8 rate, and that still comes out of our budget. So instead of us, you know, losing one, we might lose two or three, but, but the law allows them to port them out after a year.
Has that continued to happen, though, is what I'm saying? Are we, are we seeing it to where, I mean, is it going to be a problem where half of our vouchers are out of state, and they're taking up a lot of the opportunity for our county residents?
I don't really see that happening. I think last time, and again, Thursday, I can get the real numbers, but last time, I think we only had four or five that were ported out. So it's a fairly smaller amount. We don't get a lot coming in here, but again, I will no longer be on the Housing Board. Stacy has kind of asked me to make sure and to sit in on the meetings, just to kind of keep track of what's going on. And so at this time, I plan on being a member in the crowd. No input, no output. But I will just try to kind of, to monitor that a little bit. Mr. Pierce?
I sent, after our last meeting, the code information to Commissioner Boersma, because she's liaison for that office, and to Mike, and to Stacy, and to Dan. And there were, the statute clearly says a county employee cannot be a member of that Board, and that's why Mike resigned. And then we always appoint our Chair as a ex-official member, and I can't find anything that requires us to do that. And I am suggesting that we consider, first of all, maybe having Mike look at, so we can redo our resolution, and that we appoint a county commissioner to serve on that Board that's not ex-official and is not our Chair, so they can be there for more than one year. Because going to those meetings four times, you don't understand the budget stuff in four meetings. And we need some long-term representation on there. And then I'm going to suggest, because there's nothing that would prevent us from doing this, we can appoint Mike to be an ex-official liaison from the Commission to that Board. And I think, I haven't asked him, but I think he'd be willing to do that, and then he'd have standing to go to the meetings and participate in the conversation. He just can't vote under the statute. So I just, I'm really sorry that the statute said that Mike couldn't be on the Board, and we need him to be attending the meetings, and it'd be nice if he could be able to speak at the meetings, and that's what the ex-official status would give him. I'm just throwing that out. I just think we need to look at reorganizing our resolution.
And I'm kind of in the process. I've started to, it's actually an ordinance that establishes the Housing Board and all of the rules, not just simply a resolution. So there's a little bit more to it, and I'm looking at that. And it does, our, I mean, our ordinance says that, it doesn't say the Chair, it just says a member of the Commission, but the state statutes do allow for a, a member, a voting member on that Board. And actually, that would be very beneficial to that Board, because we do have issues with getting enough people for that. So if we'd had somebody who would be a voting member on that Board, that would help fill one of the vacancies that we have open right now. We have two open on that Board. And with only five people voting, getting a quorum is oftentimes quite difficult, so. So, yeah, but I'm, yeah, I'm kind of digging into the review of that ordinance as well, so.
The other thing that's in that chapter of the code is that Ram, who's running that program for us right now, is required by law to give us a report every January. Now, Mike has made a good faith effort to get that to us this year, but ever since Ram took over, I don't, I think maybe the first year I was on the Commission, the entity before Ram came, and they gave a report, and I don't know that we've ever had one since then, but I think Mike's reached out and talked to them about that. I don't remember having a report since then.
That might have also been when they came in to, got rehired, if you like, again, to take care of the program at that point. Because they've actually been, been doing our program for quite a while, and I think that's even when, when the city had their program and realized that we had hired Ram to do that, that they resolved.
But why do we care about this? It's because we're the entity assigned by statute for oversight on those millions of dollars that pass through that program, and we don't really have a clue what's going on. That's my take on it, so.
So the meeting on Thursday, I will still attend. We look at possibly by the next quarterly meeting that we'd be able to appoint Mike and the other two individuals?
Yeah, the ordinance does say that it, our ordinance, not state statute, our ordinance says that the, that we would have an ex-official commissioner, so that would need to be updated and changed before we made the appointment of a commissioner. So our ordinance needs that revision done, and that's what I'm in the process of working on.
There are certain things, as far as restrictions of who can be on the Board. In other words, they can't be someone that has rental property and stuff like that.
Is that restrictions? I didn't see that on statute.
That one's not on our statute, that's on the federal side. The federal side that said that if someone that has Section 8 housing cannot be a voting member on the Board. And that's because the Board does establish the rates that, for rent and some of the other programs.
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I guess we do have somebody here from Legislative Audit. Would you like to come forward?
Morning.
Push yourself, please.
Yes, my name is Michelle Berger. I work with the Legislative Audit, and we are here to conduct the calendar year 19 financial statement audit. We will go through internal controls, test for compliance with state statute, and review the financial statements. This is really just more of a formality to let you guys know that we are here, and then to update you that our rate this year is 74.50 for the FY '21. It should be in the packet that we provided, so.
I handed out that letter this morning.
There's a lot of jargon in here. Do you have any questions or anything? We cover all of our bases, so.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming up.
Yeah, we need just a motion to approve that engagement letter and authorize you to sign that.
Okay. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion to second to approve. All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Are there any questions for me, or anything that we need to pay special attention to?
Nope, I don't have. Any other Commissioners?
Good.
Thanks for coming up, a little brief, but, thank you.
That's okay, thank you.
Sheriff doesn't have anything today.
Yeah, we did that. So the next thing would be the be-it noted items, the volunteer listings for the stormspotters and the BCOAC volunteers that we list each year annually for work comp purposes, and those were included in the packet. And then the wage listing as well was included with your packet that gets printed in the minutes annually each year, according to state statute, so.
State's back to the financials. I see we're starting to make some large payments to our.
Our contractor, yep.
Where's, we have a, where's that coming out of? Is that coming in the bond funds first, or?
Yes, all the bond funds have to be spent first. So we actually have a separate fund we've set up. It's the 304 Fund. It's an entirely separate fund that this is, this project is set up in. So the bond dollars get put into that fund, those get spent first. And then as we need additional dollars beyond that, that we have, as you know, we have set aside in the general fund and the building, the 301 Fund, we will do either at budget time, if it works out that way, we'll budget for those, and then we can move those dollars over. But we don't want to move those dollars until we need them, basically, so.
So the 304 Fund is on our sheet that we looked at. Is that the fund we're using there? So there's $718,000 left in there from the bond, or no?
There's more than that from the bond. I mean, we've spent, our contract is, is getting very, very close to being paid in full with the architect, and then we've, I'm, the jail, I don't know how much we've spent, probably close to a million dollars probably on the jail already for construction, so.
And that's why I was just kind of wondering, is that supposed to be on this? You know, we were looking at this fund balance form. Is that not going to show on this? Because it's the 304.
No, no, that's not, no, the fund balances are really to show kind of assignments of things, so it's not going to show up on that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about that? Because I didn't quite understand that. You're saying the $718,000 that show up on the fund balance chart as of the end of December, that's not the actual amount of money that was in that balance at the end of December? That was in that account?
Yeah, there's more, actually, there's. Yeah, there's more, actually, there's probably more than that and that, but that's of cash. I mean, this just shows fund balance, this is what's carried over from other years that we've had this fund, so.
Will that be the next one that is utilized, that 718?
And I think that's some of the tax dollars that we've been collecting over the years, you know, we've been collecting taxes on that bond for the last couple, three years already. So that's kind of those dollars that go, have gone unspent in previous years, and now are showing as a fund balance. So this doesn't include the bond at all, because the bond is going to go in as cash, right? It's not going to show up as fund balance, because it's, it's not fund balance, it's actually cash. So then we have, um, this doesn't, this also doesn't show our budget authority, um, that we've, so we've given ourselves the amount of the bond and budget authority every year for a while as well, so this will look, um, this will continue to change as we, you know, go from year to year, but it won't. So yeah, I think that's what that, that, that 700 is, it's the cash that we've had, or the tax dollars that have rolled. Because we haven't been billing, we haven't spent all of that because we haven't been billing, work really just got well underway here at the construction, just within the last few months, so.
So the money that we've been paying on bills, we had some bills from Henry Carlson, for example.
Yep.
That's coming out of where? Where'd that money come out of?
So initially, it was coming out of the tax dollars that we had received.
But that's what's showing up in the 304 Fund is the tax dollars we've received, right?
Yes, yes, the tax dollars, but then we did get the bond money this, this past year.
Okay.
That finally came through, right? So, um.
And we spend that money first, is that what you said?
Yes, that has to be spent first.
Okay.
Yes.
Where does that show in our budget stuff that we've got?
I don't know if we have a trial balance for that. I can, I can, I can get you that at the next meeting, I can make some notes and kind of show you where we are with that.
All right, back to regular business. Uh, Item B, action approved agreement, or Letter A, action approved agreement number 21-02, a memorandum of understanding between SDSU Extension and Brookings County. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion, questions?
The only thing, um, that changed on this agreement from last year is actually the date. Uh, the dollar amount didn't change, we had budgeted a little bit more, um, in 21, 2021, anticipating that the salary would maybe increase, but, um, with the state not doing that this year, it stayed the same, so that dollar amount. So we have a little bit more budgeted, but that won't, um, that'll go unspent then, so. Otherwise, nothing has changed from the previous year.
All right, call the roll, please.
Crookman?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approved agreement number 21-03, a scheduled service agreement between Brookings County and Train USA Incorporated for the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion, Dustin?
Did you guys have any questions for me on that? Looks good, all right.
Your meeting must have gone well with Train and?
Yeah, Larry and I brought up some concerns we had from the past, um, we're going to work on those. Um, I did vote from a different company, it was rather, it was a lot higher, and they weren't going to do any of our controls. So it would have been, they would have had to come in and put probably $60,000 with the controls in, with thermostats, computer programming, all that. When I saw this number, it looked rather high to me, so I basically dug in and itemized everything out, but $7,000 of this is going to be those filters in that gun range unit. So that's, so it, it's basically about a $13,000 agreement. We're still changing filters monthly in that gun range unit, because that was going to be about $4,000, so we cut that out, so we're going to do that monthly. Um, this gets us belts, they're coming in greasing, doing annual startups with the heating, cooling, all that. I just wanted to explain that to you guys.
Just a little bit of history, we, this hasn't been a great relationship between us and Train and this whole thing from the beginning, and so, um, Dustin, you know, talk to them and, and let them know that their customer service has not been stellar, to say the least. And here, if, obviously, you kind of made them aware of that, I'm sure they made promises it's not going to happen again, is there anything in here after the first year, if they fall back into the way it was going before, that we can opt out of it or anything like that, or are we stuck with them for three years for sure?
So I, he, he offered the one year. Um, on Train, because I think some of it was operator error, some things weren't getting scheduled, so I didn't want to jump right into that right away, so I've been documenting everything as well, and I think three, if year one doesn't go great, they got year two, and then year three, sorry, guys, we gotta, we're looking for somebody new. But there is some issue, I mean, with the structure of the building, that unit over the classroom, it needs to be changed, and I've talked to multiple other HVAC people that have told me that. So it's not just, oh, we need to throw $12,000 at it and put a new unit on it, that's probably what needs to happen. I've done a little research. The gun range, we need to look at sealing that. I know I've talked to you guys in the board meeting, I was getting these alerts at like 2:00 in the morning on my phone. Well, when it was in the wintertime, when it's going into unoccupied mode, it tries to kick the heat on. Well, the heat and the press, basically the pressure system with that gun range, to put it, it wasn't pressurizing, so it won't kick the heat on, because it's all incorporated into one. Looking back, they probably should have did the heater on top of the roof, and then put the air handlers on the, on the south end, so it was separate, so if it wasn't pressurizing, the heat would still kick on. So now we got three doors going back into the lobby there, I've told all the RSOs and the part-time staff, let's keep those shut, so when it kicks on at 2:00 in the morning, it's creating that pressure to kick the heat on. Otherwise, it just short-cycles the system, then you got to go out, flip the breaker every time, and that's a pain in the butt. So, I need to talk to somebody, come in and probably do some spray foam up around that, uh, it'd be the north wall and the gun range. So that, I mean, that probably wasn't Train's fault either, but we're looking into that as well. The gun range, we got, we're getting better in knowing what we can do to, to try to fix that, if we got the problems there. The classroom, we're gonna, we're gonna look at putting a new unit in. Uh, Alex with Train, he's getting us a hold on that, we talked about that as well, and we're looking at doing a little duct heater for GFMP. Uh, that was put in as an after fact, and they tried to pipe in ductwork down to that, and it, it just doesn't work how it should. So we're looking at doing that with Train as well. So, yeah, we get, give them three years, and if something doesn't happen then, then we can look at doing something else. But I'll work closely with them, I'm going to document everything, so we have proof, hey, here we go, here's what happened, but.
And, and that's basically, when we attended the meeting, uh, Dustin had everything documented, it was well-prepared, and they had basically no recourse, and it, they admitted they had some issues with personnel and, and things are, uh, person actually left the meeting, went up on the roof, and you guys looked at some things, and I think it'll be resolved now. So.
Does the county have any other contract with Train besides this one?
No.
I think it's, I think it's to our advantage that, that Dustin is there. I think some of that personnel issue's been ours in the past, that didn't know what to expect out of any systems, he does. So this has been a great asset to us, to have Dustin, uh, work with Train, and I think they understand right now that they're not going to pull any wool over our eyes on this facility or this building with our contract and our service agreements, because he's going to catch it. And so we didn't have that before, and it's easy to let that stuff slide when nobody's calling you on the phone and telling you what's wrong, so I appreciate Dustin's efforts in that area, because it does make a big difference to have staff that knows what they're doing. Thank you for that effort. I, I have no problem with doing a three-year agreement.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Boersma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Crookman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved for late elderly tax freeze applications. I have a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We've done this before in the past, I think if we come in late, we'll consider them.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, motion carried. Item D, action approved the 4H Promotion and Expansion Committee roster. I have a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, motion carried. Item E, action approved, a request to fill vacancy for an investigation sergeant in the sheriff's office. I have a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion here, questions?
All of these next, um, vacancies, these next three actually, on your agenda are all due to retirements, or pending retirements, and kind of internal movement, so.
Okay. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, motion carried. Item F, action approved, a request to fill vacancy for two deputy sheriffs in the sheriff's office. I have a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, motion carried. Item G, action approved, a request to fill vacancy for an appraiser and equalization office. I have a motion approved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign, motion carried. Item H, action approved board appointments.
I was remiss in having this removed from the agenda at the onset, we had one closing that, uh, that was actually at 5:00 on Friday, so I put it on the agenda with anticipation that we might receive an application, and we did not, so there are, there are no appointments to approve. I'm going to be visiting with, uh, how we can better promote this, we need to, we have several openings on boards that we need to get filled, so we're going to continue to work on this, and hopefully bring you some applications in the near future.
Mr. Chair, I would comment to Stacy's suggestion on the, um, publication of those board appointments, it might be worth reaching out to the chamber, so that folks who are engaged in Leadership Brookings and other programs like that know about those kinds of opportunities.
Item H is deleted from the agenda, be noted. Item nine, Commission Department Director's Report.
I have surplus general ca, uh, funds, surplus cash analysis, and again, um, this might change a little bit, because we had some claims, uh, that were paid today, but it's looking like we're going to be right at our 25%, right where we want to be at year-end, so that's good. Um, and, yeah, just, actuals, just, just beneath that, so that's good. Um, the other thing that I included in my report was, uh, the, the work plan, I think that was in here. So as, as you can see, as you go down the list of things in the work plan, um, I've made updates in red, so I'll kind of run through those real quickly. Roads and bridges, um, the river bridges opened south of town, um, back in November, and of course, we do have some final work yet that will be done in the, in the spring to finish up that project. The Bruce Bridge, just north of Bruce, construction is underway, and as Brian reported, everything's going quite smoothly, we're very fortunate that the, the weather has been pretty mild, and they are able to, um, get started and get after that. I know they have a pretty aggressive timeline on it, but so far, so good. The township grant program, uh, I want to talk to, uh, last year we did have, um, Oak Lake and Vogga Townships had completed projects that were, that were, uh, reviewed, approved, and then reviewed again by, by Brian, and then we did pay out those, some of those grant dollars last year. Um, Ryan and Larry and Brian and I met, um, within the last couple of weeks to kind of discuss what that, that program, that grant program might look like for this year. We do have $100,000 again budgeted this year. Uh, right now, we have a letter drafted, um, and with kind of the consensus of approval from the board, it's basically asking the townships, um, what other projects might you need some assistance with, um, discussing that culvert inventory, I think, uh, Brian had brought that up at the last meeting, that the township, uh, boards need to have that, uh, inventory. There was some talk at the legislate, at the legislature about funding for these types of things, I don't think it really went anywhere, however, what we're saying is if it, it would be really beneficial to Brookings County if the townships would, you know, submit that inventory to us, so we would know, so if something does come through at the state level, some state funding opportunities, that we would be able to, um, proceed with that fairly quickly, because we have all of our information. So hopefully this week, sending out that letter, um, like that, not asking for culvert, uh, culverts specifically yet, but just kind of seeing what other projects that the townships are maybe anticipating or looking at that they might want some assistance with, so then we may be bringing back a recommendation to kind of revamp that, what that program might look like in, in 2021. Uh, future planning, the supplemental budget dollars, once we get 20, 2020 all closed out, um, I'll be working with both the highway department and the finance, finance office. I know that some of those dollars that will roll into the highway fund, fund balance that went unspent, some of those dollars are budgeted to, to finish off the expenditures for the, uh, bridges south of town, so we're not, um, like double budgeting, we're not going to spend this year's dollars, we're going to pull last year's dollars back out. So we're going to look at all of those opportunities, opportunities that we have, kind of across all the funds, and see where we need to do that, and bring forward a supplemental budget, uh, for your approval here in the next couple months, probably as we get 2020 closed out. Jail expansion, the, um, Commissioner Bartley and I are attending, along with jail staff, are attending, um, the jail progress meetings. Every other Thursday, we meet over at, uh, the jail and meet with, um, the project manager, the site superintendent, um, BKV is, uh, joins via, via Zoom, and we get progress updates on the jail, so that's, um, so those are happening about every other week. Uh, BCOAC, um, the generator hookup, that's complete, and that was tested, and that looks like everything's going well. Um, I did on the I-29 overpass, if you flip to the next page, I did add that the 60% cost estimate was presented at the end of last year. Um, I will be, on that self, under self-evaluation, I didn't make a note of it, but I will be, as we, again, as we kind of wrap up things, submitting that 2020 year-in review, um, so you'll be, we can be looking forward to that probably, uh, in March sometime. Um, the last thing I had was the Samara Avenue, and I know Commissioner Boersma was working on the RFP for Engineering Services for that project. I think the draft is, um, done, and we'll be looking over that, and, and then working on getting that advertised, so. Any other things that you would like added to this, this work plan?
Can I make one comment? Um, I recently got the these and the landowner agreements for the Sinai Bridge, so they're going to be coming for your guys' approval, and once we get that done, I'll go return that back to the state, and then we're looking at a March letting.
Sounds good. Anything else, one added, or looked at?
And then, um, I discussed the township meeting, um, so as part of that appointment list that was approved at the last meeting, as I had noted, Commissioner Bartley is, and I have been attending the jail progress meetings, we didn't have that officially on our appointment list, and I would like to add that and update that appointment list to that, so, um, if, if there is another commissioner that would like to attend those, we could have another one then without having to notice the meetings, but I attend, and Commissioner Bartley attends right now, so, I don't know, any thoughts on that?
Typically, I would, um, I would like to be able to attend probably one of those a month, I have a competing I have a competing set of meetings that happen on Thursdays. And so I have to miss the meeting in order to go to the other one. So I could probably do one per month.
Okay. Okay, well, I will add. So you'd have to communicate, let me know which ones you plan to attend and so that there's only two of you. But I'll put that in that appointment list then. Kind of a redo from last summer. If you recall back about a year ago, Catherine Emberline was here with the, she's from the library, Brookings Library, getting ready to organize their bike rodeo. And of course, that all got canceled due to COVID last summer. But they're looking at doing that again this summer. And what the request was, was to use our south parking lot, the employee parking lot, the new parking lot out to the south of our building. Either Wednesday, then June 9th or the 16th, she wasn't quite sure yet, from about noon to 2:30, just for a few hours in an afternoon, wondering if that would be okay. I would work, if you say it's okay, I think there is a request to, and ask to the city council as well. If you guys say that's fine, I can work with everybody involved to make sure that staff is aware that for an afternoon here in the summer that they'd have to park elsewhere, either in the West Lot or the surrounding area, which, for a few hours in the afternoon, I don't think will be too much of a hardship, especially in June. Hopefully, the weather's nice and people don't mind a little extra walk. So are you guys comfortable with that? I know you approved it last year, but then, of course, due to COVID, things got all got canceled. So trying, anticipating, hopefully getting to do it this summer. So, yes, nods, yeah, okay. And then you may have received some information on the NACO Virtual Legislative Conference, the ledge conference that some of you have gone out to in the past, out in Washington DC, is now going to be done virtually. And I think there's some registration process, I think that opens this week. If you are interested in going and want me to register you for that, the dates are March 24th through the 26th. So if you're interested in that, let me know and I can get you registered. Or go ahead and register yourself too, I think. You've probably already received that email. But if you want me to do it, just reach out to me and let me know that. And then Misty isn't able to attend, wasn't able to attend today. But she had sent an email wanting me to note that there was a Weed Board meeting Friday last week and that they have, they voted to cancel their March Weed Board meeting. My understanding as well is that the Towns and Townships Board has decided to cancel their Towns and Townships meeting as well, that March meeting. So we will have to, we will communicate that because I know Marty always spoke at that and I think Equalization always spoke at that. And so we'll have to get that information. If there's information, we can maybe send it out to the townships in a different format. But that meeting, that typical March meeting, doesn't sound like it'll be happening this year. Of course, again, due to
And it was due to the Towns and Townships, they decided they weren't going to have theirs. So the Weed Board voted in favor of not having theirs because I figured no way it would be there. The question is, when Jacob gives his equalization presentation, is that a requirement? Or those packets can be sent out and that?
I don't know if that's like, by statute, he has to meet with the townships. But I know he needs to get them that information. So that we'll have to work with Jacob and see what that looks like.
That's the one question that one of the Weed Board members brought up, those packets were handed out.
And it might have just been that that was a really good opportunity for Jacob to be in front of those folks and to talk and then to just make sure that they get their information by handing it to him rather than sending it through the mail. So, but I'll visit with him and see what his requirements are.
Okay.
And then just upcoming dates, I think most of you are registered for the Brookings SDSU Day at the Capitol tomorrow, the virtual Zoom meetings. And then, just looking a little further out, county offices will be closed for President's Day on the 15th of February. That's all I have, unless you had some additional questions for me.
Did they send a link out yet for those meetings?
I am not registered, so I don't know. You haven't received a link, a Zoom link?
Not that I remember, unless they received acknowledgement that I was registered.
Sure.
But they didn't, I haven't seen anything. I was thinking they said they would send something out and I haven't seen anything. And that's tomorrow, right?
It's tomorrow and the DOT presentation's at nine o'clock.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Well, if anybody sees anything, or I don't know if it comes to you, Stacy, if you could forward it on.
Yeah, I'll take a look, I'll look into it a little bit.
No, I have the agenda, it's just a link to get on the Zoom meeting.
Anything, any other questions? Moving on, State's Attorney's Office Report.
Dan, when is the deadline for people to apply for Paige's position?
When is the deadline to apply?
Yeah, that's being advertised, right?
Yeah, there's no deadline, it hasn't even been posted yet.
Okay. And January 29th, is that what it said?
Yeah, that Friday. Do you have someone in mind?
Sorry.
All right, moving on to number, item 11, Commissioner Reports and Discussion. Commissioner Pierce?
On January 7th, I attended and our conversation was mainly on Legislative Day tomorrow. And hopefully, everybody will be able to attend that. And like I said, the DOT presentation starts at nine o'clock. And hopefully, they'll have some interesting things to say. On January 11th, I attended the drainage meeting. And at that, the drainage meeting on the 11th, we invited the city to come and talk to us about drainage. And Jackie Lanning came and she had a lot of information for us. Where we were looking at in the southeast quadrant, and I think some of this will show up in the report, some of the area that we were looking at maybe making some changes in is owned by the city. And the city has put that land in an easement program. And the easement programs have a detrimental effect on being able to fix drainage issues. So that might be a hurdle to doing some of the things that we were thinking about. But you'll see all that in the report. And it was interesting, from my perspective, listening to the conversation. I mean, the sentiment was really that the city kind of has a handle on their drainage issues. So it was very interesting. Then on the 14th, I attended the pandemic meeting by Zoom. I'm just kind of sitting in on that, I'm not a member of that group. But I just wanted a little more information, what was going on with the COVID stuff. And I did ask a question about marketing and how we're advertising, what's going on, giving out public information. After the meeting, Paul Brazino sent me an email asking if, because the city and the hospital and SDSU have a group that meet weekly to disseminate public information. And he said, should Bob be on that committee? And Bob and Stacy and I had a conversation and Stacy's our PIO. And I think Stacy's going to join that group, if I am correct on that. So that we're sure that information is getting out to people that don't live in the municipalities. We need to be sure that we're getting information out to the whole county as relates to the COVID response. And then I have an issue that's not a committee-related thing. But as part of the Cures Program, the state of South Dakota, the governor allocated $10 million to go to landlords and utilities to assist people that were unable to pay their rent. And so I think Mike, it might have been two meetings ago, gave us a little report on how much money had come into Brookings County on that. And I don't remember those numbers. That program ended December 31st. I talked to Lorraine Pollock, did I say her name right? Okay, Lorraine Pollock. And the last I heard, that little over $8 million of that money had been disseminated throughout the state. And there was probably a month left at that time. So I don't know what the final number turned out to be. It was a really good program and a really good program from the county. Because you might note in our packet, we were paying rent again. We didn't pay any rent payments or any utility payments generally for people in September, October, November, and December, because they were able to get those Cures money out of that grant program. And then that money, instead of going to the person, went directly to the landlord or to the utility company. It was a successful Cures program, money got out. I am interested in whether or not you all would be willing to have a letter sent to the governor that says that we appreciated that program, that that cut back on what we had to pay under our duties on the poor lien relief for rent payments, because it does affect county government a lot and utilities, and ask that of the new monies coming in, that she look at refunding that program again. That was a really good thing for Brookings County and it saved us a lot of money during that last quarter. And I don't know how that's going to work in 2021. We just don't know what's going to happen. And it would be nice, and I think the state has the money and the ability to do that out of those Cures money. But maybe sending a letter to the governor isn't the right way. Maybe we should ask SDACC to look at that. I don't know, but somehow I would like us speaking up and saying, this was a good program. This actually worked, it helped people, and it helped county government. Any thoughts on that?
I guess, I feel like it seems like our voices would probably be amplified if it came from the county association because I'm sure there are others who had similar experiences.
Okay.
We could certainly piggyback off of that if they come up with a policy decision or pitch for the program. We could certainly back it up with a letter. But I think we wait until the state association takes some action first.
And we can suggest that to the state
To the state association, yeah, absolutely.
And see what other counties have similar sentiments and would sign on to a joint letter or a full association letter, if that's a policy statement we want to make.
So how do we, how do you propose that we get that information to the state association? I can send an email if you'd like for me to do that. Stacy could send
Stacy wants to send a half commission.
Would you want to do that, Stacy? Because it really was a good program. I don't think there was a lot of hooptalaw about it and I don't think everybody knew about it. But it did work, it did what it was supposed to do. And that would be all I have to report.
Maybe some follow-up comments from Mike on that also, since he administered the program.
I think Mike would probably have the exact numbers. And I think that would be good to send out to the association too.
And his office spent three months helping people fill out those applications. You know, they did a good job with that.
Mr. Bartley?
All right, on the 13th, I had attended a Zoom meeting for the Leader Roundtable in the morning. It was a presentation from the DRT group from the city. And it had a lot of information about future development, housing drainage was part of that presentation. It was probably really good information that hadn't been disseminated in that format before. I assume that it's public information, it's on their website. If it's not on their website, Brookings Economic Development Corporation has the connection to the website to take a look at it and review those slides. It's very interesting. And as Commissioner Pierce had noted, they've made some decisions that affect what we're going to do in the future as far as county planning. And so we need to take a look at that. I'm not saying that it's not workable, but it presents some challenges on how the development of the joint jurisdiction ordinance goes in place. So we'll have to be looking at that because we want to move that forward as quickly as we can. So it's a good presentation. There will be a follow-up on the next Leader Roundtable on that discussion. There wasn't time for questions at the end, or enough questions at the end. So we'll probably have a follow-up at the next Leader Roundtable meeting next month. On the 14th, attended the jail meeting, as Stacy had said. The jail project is moving along really well. There are some hiccups, you know, kind of always in any construction project. We've had some delays on some of the pre-casts, but they'll be here shortly and start erection on the pre-cast. The generator was lifted in by a crane and stuck in its spot back there. It was kind of an interesting process to put that in. Didn't take them long once it got there. They've had some changes in some of the ways of running some of the project. They've moved some things up and they're going to cover some things with plastic and do some things while they're waiting for the pre-cast and make up schedule that's further ahead now so that they stay on time. And I think they believe they're on time and they've done a good job. So the jail project is looking good. We'll probably see the cells somewhere in first part of March, was that what you understood, Stacy? Somewhere in that area, we'll see those arriving. We'll have the pre-cast, most of the pre-cast will be up before that. There'll be an opening in the pre-cast walls with cement wrapped to get the cells up in place. And then they'll take the cement wrap, put the last of the pre-cast panels up. But the roof should be on by that time. So you'll see a lot of progress in the next month and a half to two months on the exterior part of the building. And it'll be a lot of interior stuff, obviously, that has to be finished. So you're going to see a lot of progress shortly. It obviously looks like a little bit of a mess right now, but that's to be expected with this larger project. So a good report from them, and I think they're doing a good job. And they're staying on top of BKV and getting their metals and working on their types of things that slow things down sometimes. So they are pressing hard and getting things on schedule. So that'd be my report.
Mr. Krogman?
Yes, January 6th, I had a growth partnership meeting, went over budget and passing the budget there. January 8th, I had the Township Grant Meeting with Commissioner Jensen, Stacy, and Brian on potential uses for the grant money. And that's all I have. Quite a few meetings coming up the end of the month.
Mr. Boersma?
I'm in the same boat as Commissioner Krogman. Most of my meetings are end of the month. But thus far, so the last two weeks, I haven't had any meetings. Been working on getting the RFP finalized for Engineering Services for Samara Avenue. So I think probably we'll have the county staff and Brian and Stacy and Larry and I walk through and kind of review that before we send it over to Jameson and the City of Volga for them to make comments. We've got a, I think I've built in, in the schedule tentatively right now, I have built in about three to four weeks for comments from those various entities prior to it being published at the beginning of, or the middle of February. So that's kind of the tentative timeline, we've got it sitting out right now.
Thank you. On the 6th, I attended the Conservation District meeting. They're moving along the way they usually are and they're getting their fundings. And it was kind of interesting on equipment, every summer, they lease a couple tractors to use. And they had a little snafu there because of equipment not being delivered. But local, one of the local implement dealers, they got it worked out. So that was a good deal for the Conservation District. And there is an opening, they had an individual resign. And there is an opening on Conservation Board. So if you're interested, you can contact them. On the 7th, I attended the meeting with Dustin, with Train out there. And then on the 8th, Culvert Grant Meeting with Stacy and Ryan. On the 14th, I had a meeting with Bob and a PPCC meeting on the COVID planning. And that went quite well, some questions were answered. And then on the 15th, attended the Weed Meeting, as discussed before, the no township, no annual meeting. And there's no Weed Meeting. So we did approve to do the DOT contracts, to spray the interstates and the state roads and also participate in the Gopher Grant Program with the DOT also. That's all I have. So move on to item number with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, Personnel. I have a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Had a motion and a second. All those in favor, signaled by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried, move into executive session.